Now, we want to be prepared for this. That's the only thing that's planned out there. We don't change much. It definitely will be big. So it's not too much. It's all in the box. It doesn't necessarily have to be. It's part of the rest when you dress this on. Now, I don't know. You know, the thing about this script is that we are doing it in a small unit. We should. We don't do this. I know it's actually very perfect. You know, I'm sure that it should be. It's just not connected to you. No, it's not. What I'm saying is that it's not anything that can be. Thank you. We need to be honest. When we come from top, it's not. And then. I think it's a lot of. So. And that's. And then they have been bigger. I mean, certain houses in each county have their own. We were. It's important. I mean, that's. You're acting. Um, things that purchase their product. How's that? We were mentioning up in town. She had a great company. He's going to. They're more. So they have no way of. That's why she goes. Yeah. Go with the old small places again. And he has one daughter and many friends. Mine can be a twenty eight month. It's good. It's for the children. It's something to. You didn't. Uh, it's not possible. It's not a good idea. You know, it's a little. Right on your mind. In ten months. So yes, well, that was always. I think. Well, that's. I think that's on the. Which by our. That is kind of. Then we could have to take. We need to come down. For the three boys. The one person for town. She's trying to join you. Probably. And that's. All these. So if you can't. If I don't get out of the house. She can search through the city. It's the one. Or it is. It's also. That is. That's what we do. Not the. So. So. That's. Well, I'm. That's true. So. So. Well, I'm not. Okay. I wish. It's not. There is. The organization. It's great. So. So. It's. It's. He's trying to ask. He'll come to. First. He just said. He got. Because he won. He won. So. He's. He's trying. And so they're trying. He can. Play into this. So. He has some. So. It is. Right. But. It's. It's. No, I didn't. I don't. No. So. But he. He was. He. That's. They. It's. It's. But. Yes. Most of them. I think. They're. 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 Actually. They're. I don't know. It was. And. I was trying to. Like. She. I could. Kind of. I could. Being. You know. You. You. There's. Definitely. Anything. On. From the. That. For. You. Like. That is. You know, I think it's much. Yeah. It's like. You know. I. I think. I think. I think. I think. I think. I think. Thanks. Yeah. No, I'm not. I'm not. I'm sorry. It's all. It's. It's. Yeah. It's. 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 I. It's. 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 I don't. I'm not. 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 Oh, wow. And. I mean. How could. I don't. I don't. I don't. More. It's. Yeah. Part. It's. My. I don't. I don't. It's. For. I. I. That's. Where. I'm. I'm. Looking. I. I. We. 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 Send. He. 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 I'm. 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 I don't. But what. It's. It's. Then. You can. And so. You can. You. So. I think. We. Have. To. Do. This. It's. 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 For. All. I'm. 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 I think. You. Long. And. I. I think. You know. I'm. 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 Uh. But. I think. And. I don't. I don't. And. I don't. I don't. If. That's. The. Type. You know. Oh. But. It. Is. I. I don't. I don't. I don't. And. I think. You. Actually. Or. I think. I'm. 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 Um. We are. All. There. Some. Right. I don't. I don't. I don't. I'm. I'm. Good. I'm. But. Plus. They. They. Right. I'm. I'm. Most. And. There's. Some. I'm. Actually. So. It gets. To get. Mine. That. I'm. I don't. I remember. I'm. 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 Jim. So. I think. I think. It's. I'm. Same. That. I think. I think. I think. I think. It's. What. To. That. And. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. We. Would. That. Last. Can. You. Was. Everybody. I'm. 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 I think. It's. I'm. I don't. Which. That. All. The. The. Which. I'm. You. Have. That's. It's. I'm. You know. It's. I think. I have. So. They. 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 I'm. So. It's. Now. So. I'm. 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 In. That. Um. I think. It's. So. I'm. 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 Poisoning. I. I. That's. It's. It's. In. I. We. I look. At. It. It's. Like. So. I was. I'm. 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 For. About. I don't. Be. And. I was. The one. The other. I'm. Picture. That was. Found. There. It was. Even. With. The. Time. And. 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 For. The. For. The. 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 Law. That's. The. The. Being. The. 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 A lot. Of. All. The. Not. That. It's. I'm. Thinking. I'm. 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 Four. Two. Wow. And. I'm. Um. Yeah. I'm. 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 Yeah. If. We're. Engaged. With. You. Yeah. It's. We're. That. We're. 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 I'm. Sorry. For. That. That. People. He's. Talking. And. He's. 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 Hey. For. That. Time. He's. 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 Didn't. You. Know. He's. I. You. Know. Come. On. And. So. He. He. He's. 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 I'm. Talking. About.
Well. I love. Alicia. And. The. Speaker.
I have. It's been an awkward one. At least. It's. That. All right. Yep. Seven. Um. Well. I'm sure. We've. Got. Something. Any. Uh. Just. Me. Wait. Now. Scott. Make. It. I don't. Know. Why.
You know. The fact. It's. Kind of. Two. I. I'm. 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 With. You. Yeah.
Well. Nobody said. They want. That's. Usually. What. Yeah. It's. It's. Same. One. Two. And. Two. So. Probably. Not. Pretty. But. You know. How. Yeah. Someone. One. Five. And. Totally. That. Well. Whereas. There's. No. Chance. Get. Set. Up. And. I. I'll. Put him in my file section. Because. I didn't. Think. Well. It wasn't. Short. And. Then. You said. I. Ten minutes. Early. Was on. Time. My. Time. First. And. And. I tried. To. I. Not. Always. Says. Thanks.
I'm afraid. Yeah. And. It's. That's. The place. That you. Yeah. You know. How. Can. Did. It. 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 Lost. Every. Direction. It's. About. We're. Trying. To. Try. And. And. I'm. You know. And. I'm. 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 And. Well. I'm. 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 And. I'm. 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 Guys. I'm. I'm. But. It looks. Going. To. Say. That. In. Anyway. I was. In. Long. But. She. Was. And. All. Were. Using. Long. Was. Long. But. It's. It's. I'm. 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 Because. It. It's.[657.90]
The petitioners represent.
Good evening, I'm Jeff Carter with Carter Engineering Consultants, seventeen thirty Cole Springs Road in Bishop. And representing Mr. Hammett, the property owner this evening, Mr. Jeff Pittman is also an owner's representative and he's here. With me tonight as well, and I am going to ask for the clicker. I get the clicker? All right, I did want to talk a little bit more about the the development plan that was rezoned back in nineteen ninety. It was rezoned from agriculture to B one and A two. It was part of a two hundred and four and a half acre tract. And it was rezoned for the purpose of a planned commercial and residential development. And this is the the development plan that was submitted in that packet. The highway fifty three is up and down here, north and south, US highway seventy eight here is east and west. The Oak Coney Crossing residential subdivision that was completed is here. And then the subject property that we're talking about here is a little over forty acres. The original development plan had a hundred and seventy two thousand square feet of retail. What you can see this rather large building here was part of the original development plan was a hundred and seventy two thousand square feet. Fifteen thousand square feet of restaurant space, ten thousand square feet of video rental space. Ten thousand square feet of financial banking, five thousand square feet for convenience store and forty thousand square feet for retail. So the total there was two hundred and fifty two thousand square feet. There are sixteen parcels of land on this development plan, you can kind of see how there's parcels all along highway seventy eight. And then there's parcels down here that's immediately adjacent to Oak Coney Crossing subdivision as well as some parcels down down below there. There was thought in nineteen ninety to include a road from the median break there on highway seventy eight. They would go through the commercial development and connect to Oak Coney Crossing subdivision. So that was the thinking in nineteen ninety. It did include, you can see down the lower left corner, it did include space for fast food restaurant, retail space, shopping center, that sort of thing. So that was approved in nineteen ninety. Fast forward to today, this is the development plan, I fast forwarded too much, I'm sorry. There there's a development plan that we have submitted that staff pointed out. And and again, this is oriented the very same way. Highway fifty three is on your left, you can see Striplings there on the corner that was built about ten years ago, I believe, and then highway seventy eight at the very top. This this development plan has a hundred and ninety two thousand square feet of retail. And forty eight thousand five hundred square feet of grocery. If you remember in the original development plan, there was a large building here. And that's essentially what we have there is a large retail building. The grocery store is planned to go here. And then the restaurant space along highway seventy eight, which is really, which is really where it should be. I would like to draw your attention to the lower right corner here. This exhibits, the the yellow area represents the area that we're not asking to do anything with. We're not asking to change that at all. And that is the area between Striplings and Oak Coney Crossing subdivision, this whole area here. We have agreed just to leave zone B one. And so what we're asking to the the pink area, if you will, that is the area that we're asking to to rezone from B one to to B two. The road through the property, here's the median break and we've got the access road here. We don't, again, it was planned in nineteen ninety to have the road to connect to Oak Coney Crossing subdivision since it was a commercial and residential development. We don't, we don't really. We don't really have a strong opinion one way or the other, whether it needs to be connected. We're okay, our actual development plan shows a pedestrian connect connection point here. We feel like it would be a good place to have the folks in the neighborhood be able to to walk to the to the restaurants and the grocery store and that sort of thing. But really, honestly, we're 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 at your, you know, your recommendation on that and staff's recommendation. We can not have it or have it either either way. One thing I wanted to point out, if you remember on the old development plan, just let me flip back there. These out parcels here are really not designated as one use or another. But these are all commercial parcels that butt up against Oak Coney Crossing subdivision. And what we've done is we've taken our development plan and moved all of the drive through restaurants. Which is one of the two issues that the reason that we're here tonight is to get to drive through restaurants. We've moved them in the appropriate place, which is up next to highway seventy eight along that frontage. And you can see some dimensions here. The closest restaurant is a little over five hundred feet from Oak Coney Crossing subdivision. There is a fifty foot buffer, that's that shaded area here. There's fifty foot buffer and of course there'll be retail buildings there that's that's blocking any 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 thing coming from, you know, from the from the restaurant use. The differences in B one and B two zoning, you might be asking yourself, well, why, you know, why are we even asking the difference between B one and B two? I did just want to go through real briefly, and this is straight out of the Oak Coney County UDC, some differences between B one and B two. B one and B two, you can build offices by right. You can build a automobile repair area in B one and B two. Oil change places you can do that, a car wash you can build in B one and B two. And that is part of our development, so you can buy right, build in B one. Restaurants, you can build full service, family restaurants, quality restaurants. You can, you can essentially do all the restaurants in B one that you can do, I'm sorry, all restaurants you can do in B two that you can do in B one. Except for the the pickup windows, except for the drive through windows. Home centers and hardware stores, you can build in B one and B two nursery and garden centers and supermarkets, grocery stores. You can build those in B one and B two. So really, why are we, why are we here tonight? The development plan was was laid out, you know, years ago. We are really updating the development plan, we're we're wanting to do drive throughs. And we're also wanting to build a grocery store over twenty thousand square feet. And so those two reasons are the reasons we're asking to to rezone to to B two. So two reasons, the drive throughs for the restaurants and then having retail over twenty thousand square feet specifically for the for the grocery stores. We have met with Striplings, donors of Striplings, and we showed them our development plan. They were very happy, very supportive of our development plan. We also met with representatives of Oak Coney Crossing subdivision. I thought we had a good meeting, very respectful meeting with representatives. I'm not going to try to tell you they support our development, but I thought it was a good positive, I had some positive discussions, you know, back and forth with them. And I would do appreciate appreciate their time. So why, why vote for to recommend rezoning to B two? Well, there's, there's lots of reasons, really, this is a very strategic location for this type of development in the county. It's at a major crossroads, we all know highway seventy eight and highway fifty three is is a major intersection. And I think thought to be commercial for for a long, long time. And finally, there's an opportunity to have sewer there. And so the developer, the property owner is is ready to to move on it. It's already zone commercial, it's part of a planned development. And really, as I said before, I felt like this is really an update to a development plan that was approved in nineteen ninety. And you say, why do you say that? Well, in nineteen ninety, they thought, well, we're going to build a ten thousand square foot blockbuster. You're not going to do that today, right? I mean, times have changed, people won't drive throughs, I mean, that's what the market market shows. And so it is a change from B one to B two, but it is not a significant change in terms of of the development plan. This development meets all of the requirements of the county future land use plan. It meets all of the boxes in terms of, is this a good place for a commercial development like this? It will provide a very positive economic. Economics is part of it, right? I mean, it is going to provide about three million in annual revenue for the county from sales taxes. It's going to create a significant amount of jobs, so it has a lot of reasons to to support it. This graphic here will kind of show you the in red where this development is located. And you can kind of see as you go out a radius around the development, if you can get to three to three and a half mile radius before you really get to another commercial node like this. And why do I bring that up? Well, a lot of residents, including myself, right now that live in Bishop and live in High Shoals, we drive over to Butler's Crossing to shop, grocery shop to to get fuel to do whatever. And if this development is allowed to go through, then that's going to pull traffic and pull congestion away from from Butler's Crossing. Because they won't, people like me won't drive over that way, they'll drive to to this intersection. So. In closing, you know, really, I mean, the the previous commission in nineteen ninety liked this area as a as a commercial development shopping center. The future development map absolutely supports it. Your your county staff supports this development, thinks it's a good idea. And so we would, we would really appreciate appreciate your help tonight. And again, just to emphasize, what are we asking for? Well, we're asking for the drive throughs and for the grocery store to be over twenty thousand square feet. And that's what we're, that's what we're asking you to to support. So thank you for your time, we'll be glad to try to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this request? We have a couple of people signed up to speak in opposition, Stanton Porter.
Good evening, my name is Stanton Porter, my address is twenty nine twenty five Fern Hill Road in Bogart. Although I am an attorney and been hired to represent the Coney Crossing subdivision, I also am an Coney County resident. I know that you may have in your packet, the site plan, I did blow it up, so you didn't have to turn and look, but I do want to pass this around a large scale. Virgin color, as we sort of talked through a few of the items that were just raised. On behalf of the homeowner association and the the people in that area, we're asking that you recommend to the Oak Coney County commissioners that they deny this rezone request. Oftentimes, when you see people here opposing some of these matters, it's because they don't want development near them. And and that's the case here, but there's something that's particularly unique about this project. And that is that the Oak Coney Crossing subdivision immediately below this development was part of a larger development that was passed in nineteen ninety. Every one of the homeowners that live in Oak Coney Crossing bought their house with the legal understanding and expectation that that property, that this subject property would and likely will be developed. But that it would be developed under the B one conditions, that it was, there's a road that connects to it. I mean, this is not a case of there's vacant land near a subdivision and people don't want it developed a particular way. This is part of their subdivision, it was part of the development. And we think that 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 gives them sort of a, an even more vested interest in the in the fact of what goes in there and whether or not this rezone should be granted. He was right, that the two, two main issues, the reasons to oppose this are the large scale grocery store and the drive throughs. As we know, these site plans, they don't have to get built exactly how they are. But as it is, and and this could certainly change, there could be additional ones, as it is, there are four drive throughs and one large scale anchor grocery store. That brings a whole different kind of commercial traffic, a whole different type of population to the area than you would have in the types of stores that would be allowed under a B one. In reading from the project narrative put out by Carter. They said that the vision of the development is to provide a commercial staple for transient travelers and local commuters. I can tell you that Oak Coney Crossing residents did not purchase their house with the understanding that this was going to be developed as a B one. Because they thought this was going to be a destination for transient travelers and local commuters. Stripling's gas station and country store there is operated under B one successfully. Yes, we understand they're probably not going to build a new blockbuster there. But as was mentioned, there are lots of uses and economically feasible businesses that could go in the area under a B one development. I think the main reason that it wasn't developed until this day is because of sewer, not because of the lack of rezoning. When you, when you look on the bottom part of this map, you see, you you can see the names of the people that live there. They're going to be staring at the back of a supermarket. Where large delivery trucks make their deliveries at night, we know, you know, oftentimes grocery stores are stocked at night, some of them are open all night, depending on what goes there. Even the staff recommendation, I mean, a fifty foot buffer is what's required, that's there. The staff recommendation has a six foot fence to go up. I'm six one, and if I were standing on any of these people's back deck, they're going to have a large, you know, sort of open view of this, the backside of a large grocery store. That likely is going to produce noise and light unlike any kind of businesses that would exist in a B one. When it comes to drive throughs. You know, I think that one of the things maybe raised as well, a Chick-fil-A may come or something like that, and who wouldn't want that? And and maybe if that's all it was, maybe some people would be okay with it, although it certainly generates a lot of traffic. But many drive throughs produce long lines, they're also open very late at night. And you get, you know, I hate to say it, but you get a different population that's visiting a drive through at one or two AM as some drive through restaurants are open. And so you're going to be that that destination, that attraction for these transient travelers that are becoming through the area that don't come here now, because this isn't there. They go somewhere else, so you know, whether it's coming down from the Monroe Walton County area, this is going to be that destination on where they go at one or two o'clock in the morning. Which they wouldn't be going there under a B one designation. Additionally, because this was part of a larger development, if the rezones granted, there's no transition zone between a B two zoned area and a residential subdivision. In in sort of ideal situations of land planning, if we were going to go from a highway corridor, B two type zoning, there'd be some transition area. So you you've got your your large grocery store, your drive throughs, there'd be some sort of buffer. And so whether that'd be office space or some apartments or or some kind of transition area where you went from that directly, instead of going directly to the residential area. And the reason that doesn't exist is because when this plan was put together in nineteen ninety, it was going to be a B one. Nobody in sitting behind me, that all the people in red are here in support of this position, nobody's here saying they don't want development. Nobody's saying, don't come and develop to this project. I expect many, if not all of them, frequent striplings that is there and was the first part of this larger project to be developed. Nobody's saying that that shouldn't happen, but it should happen under the B one zoning. Oak Coney County should stand up and advocate for slow growth. There are counties, other counties in the area that have not done this and and have realized that there's a lot of issues with it. From overcrowding of streets and infrastructure to traffic issues. Sewer issues. That that they should advocate for slow growth. And in particular, there are other projects that have already been approved on highway seventy eight that would allow a grocery store. If there's this giant need for a grocery store to service this area, let's let that development go forward. See what happens, let's be very slow and intentional about development before we approve and change prior project designations. With the B two zoning, these residents in all of the neighborhood are going to be subjected to additional light pollution. You just have different types of parking lots, I think there's even a variance to add additional parking. And I know this board doesn't make decisions about or make recommendations about variances, but there's going to be additional light pollution. You're going to have additional noise pollution that you wouldn't have under a B one designation. Again, because of a large scale grocery store that has frequent large semis making deliveries. And these drive through restaurants that are going to produce long lines late into the night. It's going to be an attraction for crime, again, going back to their own words, this commercial staple for transient travelers. There'll also be odors, I mean, frequently, you know, if you're ever around over maybe in the the Epps Bridge area, you can smell the restaurants when the drive throughs are cooking. That's what all these people are going to smell when they stand out on their backyard. And and that's really unique or particular to the drive through type restaurants. And then traffic, we're talking about by putting an anchor like a grocery store. You're going to make this that destination like the the applicant has stated. It's just going to be a tremendous amount of people that are there. Already, highway fifty three is extremely busy. It's almost impossible at many times during the day to turn left out of the subdivision. And I understand there's a plan to put a traffic light in on the exit, but out of their subdivision, you can't hardly turn left right now. And that's without the new middle school being built over on Dove Creek. And it's going to generate even more traffic in the mornings. And I expect that many of these residents won't be able to turn left at all, they'll have to turn right, go down and and probably turn around in this in this shopping center to come out at a light, to be able to make that left hand turn. Whether they're going to work or activities for their children. I'm going to say the rest of the time, because I know some of the the members of the subdivision would like to speak, but are asking that you recommend to the Oak Coney County commissioners that this rezone not be granted. And certainly, if there are questions that you'd have of me or or anyone here, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you. Rick Caffrey.
Commissioners, good evening, my name is Rick Caffrey, live at fourteen thirty Oak Coney Crossing subdivision, I'm running across the circle. And appreciate the opportunity to talk to you guys tonight. There's not a whole lot more that I want to add to what Stanton said tonight. But we feel that this development would be utterly destructive to our neighborhood. We understand that it's been, you know, zone commercial B one, we've known that, I've lived in that subdivision since two thousand and one. And so we're not anti-business. But it just seems like this is, you know, way, way above and beyond what we really need to have in that that particular spot. Stanton mentioned that under B one, there's no evidence that it wouldn't be a viable commercial area that would also generate tax revenue. So it's not like they wouldn't, the county wouldn't see some tax revenue coming from B one style development. The other thing he mentioned is the the traffic lights and and coming out of our our subdivision right now, it's just, it's very difficult to take a left. This would exacerbate that problem tremendously. The fact that they want to put in a, like a Publix or Kroger style store right next to our subdivision is, is just, it's hard to wrap my head around that. And and as it is for just by every way in our neighborhood. The development that he was talking about that's already been approved, my understanding is that right across from Prince Avenue, Prince Avenue School, on seventy eight. There's a senior, a senior living community that's been approved, that's going to be anchored by a twenty thousand square foot grocery store of Ingles or of Publix. Well, that's a half a mile, that's a half a mile from this project right here. It just seems like, that doesn't sound like or looks like, you know, slow, controlled, balanced growth for Oak Coney County. So there's just a lot of reasons, the the fast food restaurants, I mean, who are you going to, who are you going to get to work in those places? I mean, is Burger King the one we just put in over here, is that even open? I mean, you just can't find people to work in these places. If they are open, you know, they're going to cause problems in terms of noise and odors and that kind of thing. So we just, we we do have a lot of community support, we started the petition. We, our goal was to have five hundred signatures by the time that we, that the board of commissioners met to decide on your recommendations. We started the petition about three days ago, or last time I checked, we're a little over four hundred signatures. You guys are welcome to go check out some of the comments there, but the overwhelming sentiment that I see from the from the county, not just residents in our neighborhood, but from the county, is that they are against this. This massive style proposal that we're looking at right here. So we just asked that you guys really consider this and and please don't, don't win at our Coney, so to speak. And then we, we ask that you recommend that you deny this this particular project. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak in opposition to this request? All set, all right, in that case, we'll close, oh, excuse me, how much time does petitioner have for a response? Okay. Assuming that you would like.
Yes, sir, thank you, I'll be brief, just a couple of, couple of things that I was thinking, I was, as I was listening to to speaker. First of all, the transient development that they mentioned in the report. What we, what we believe is that people, for example, coming from Monroe to Athens would stop and stop in here and and go through the restaurant or go to the general store or go to, go to the grocery store. We do not feel like that it's going to pull people as a destination from, let's say, Winder, but because they'll just go to Bethlehem. There's a new development down in in Monroe, they'll go there, but if they're passing through, certainly, we would welcome their, you know, their their tax dollars. We do feel like that this development will serve the immediate area. We do feel like, like Westland, for example, that's that's under construction now, so it's going to be a lot of rooftops. For them, right now, they would go to Butler's Crossing more than likely to do their grocery shopping. If this development was put in place, they wouldn't do that. So the traffic on highway fifty three, I think rationally, you know, wouldn't get as congested as it is now. As far as the traffic light goes, I would point out that our traffic study does show that there is a need for a traffic light at the median break on highway seventy eight. It does not warrant a traffic light at fifty three. There is a potential at some point for it to warrant a traffic light, but as it stands now, it would not be warranted by G dot. But there is a potential to to, for there to be one there one day. There is also, I would point out, I I and I would agree with this, I do not want a restaurant open at two o'clock in the morning. I just don't, as a resident of Oak Coney County, so I mean, there is a mechanism to control that through the REA. I think what we're looking for is reasonable restaurants, you know, not somebody that's going to be open in in middle of the night with people coming from all over the area to congregate, we're not looking for that. So in the real estate agreement, there is the possibility to to limit that type of thing, and we're open to that. We're not trying to make this into, you know, some areas of Atlanta that that, you know, nobody, nobody wants. So that's all I got, thank you.
All right, this time I'll close the public hearing and return to the commission. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for staff or the petition?
All right, of course, really.
Yes, sir.
Can you, can you tell us the difference between a multi-use path and a pedestrian path?
The the multi-use path is a little bit larger, ten foot wide, maybe bollards in the middle.
For a golf cart.
Yeah, golf cart or strollers, just so that you're not crammed in on a five foot path.
Oh, so it's just bigger?
Yes.
Not big?
No.
Okay, got it. The, what's shown on the drawing is exactly what has to be.
That's right.
Unless we come back before a whole other reason.
That's that's correct.
That's correct.
Yes, our reasoning is our concept plan specific.
Right, so they can't change anything they got here if it gets approved or.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Don't we have an ordinance in place already in our code that limits? Deliveries and dumpsters and noises from eleven o'clock to seven o'clock?
We have a noise ordinance, yes.
So we can't, so in the middle of the night deliveries?
Right.
All that up against the buffer?
Right.
As to our ordinance that came.
That's, that's, that's correct, it's not supposed to happen, if it does, then we'll address it. Obviously, you do have the option, and I think you have in the past of adding additional hours as as Jeff had mentioned. So so there are additional restrictions if there's a desire to do something like that.
Well, I thought we had it from seven to eleven, I just.
Yes, that's right, yes, that's right.
And I read in the narrative, I think I did, that it said that no lights are supposed to be directed past the buffer area from the back of the store.
That's right.
Tell us how that works, because I I'm very unfamiliar.
Yeah, and and that's, that's in our UDC as well. Our Unified Development Code restricts the amount of spillover of light from a development into a residential area. So it can't be more than one foot candle at the property line.
So there's a measurement. It's not somebody's discretion.
No, we we actually require that they provide us a lighting plan and verify that that that's the case at those property lines.
Okay, great. All right, that's all I got.
Good question. Has there been any discussion, if looking at any sort of compromise for any of this buffer area, which everybody, you know, from their standpoint, is saying, but we'll be looking at this thing. We'll be listening to this. Is there any discussion at all or has been there about earth, earth and berms in that area? Was it a fifty-foot buffer that that full extent?
Not to my knowledge.
But do you know that they had minute this? Any conversation about berms?
Not with the staff, no.
Okay.
Where, what is the square foot break point?
Yeah, that that twenty thousand, like like Jeff had mentioned, yeah. That's the limit on the 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 single use building.
And I think my next question might be for Did you guys give any consideration for Building twelve? I guess I'm curious as to why Building twelve has to be B two in that people. What what makes Building twelve be two?
Okay, I will be totally honest with you and tell you that I can't, I'm not a hundred percent sure which one is B tw- of Building twelve. So I'm sorry.
Eighty-four thousand five hundred square foot.
The grocery store? Gotcha, gotcha. Yes, sir. That that is an attached building. It's not going to be one huge, like, user retail, okay? But there will be smaller buildings that will be less than twenty thousand square feet, but the way I understand the ordinance reads, I mean, the the building itself, if you measure the entire width, the building would be over twenty thousand square feet. Does that make sense?
Well, I I don't know, because I, my understanding was that building was a carryover from the original plan, and it was.
That's right. And I I don't, that may be a question for staff. I don't know, but it was on the nineteen ninety plan, more than twenty thousand square feet. But if you take that building and you, you know, you've got one big building and you've got different tenants, the tenants are less than twenty thousand square feet. So I I'm not sure I can answer that, but I mean, it was in the nineteen ninety development plan as a big, a very large building.
Based on your input, it's not a drive-through restaurant, and it's not a forty thousand square foot grocery store. So I'm wondering why it's a B two.
Because the way I'm interpreting it is apparently different than nineteen ninety. I'm interpreting if you have a single building that's over twenty thousand square feet, it needs to be B two.
And what is your interpretation?
So they could have cut that out and put that in with the B one portion. That's right. There was, there was two hundred fifty thousand, two hundred fifty-two thousand square feet of retail grocery shopping center approved in nineteen ninety for this site, right? So absolutely, I believe they just went with the entirety of that road frontage on seventy-eight as B two. To encompass the drive-throughs, you know, and the larger square footage for the the grocery. But certainly, I guess they could have gone up and around that twelve lots. It could have been higher around the B, the 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 outlots up front, yes.
I have one more question for Carter. So did you guys give consideration anywhere on the plan? I see in the upper right-hand corner, for example, just outside of that waste park, store mark, sorry. There seems like there might maybe other locations for the supermarket building that aren't a budding backyard.
We did, but the way this property is is shaped, it's just not, not conducive. I mean, we could have moved it to one side of the other, but there's property owners all along the southern property line. So we we really cannot find a better place for a supermarket.
Yes, sir. I've not heard any comment about the car wash.
Yes, sir.
What's the location?
So it is number seven, I believe. I'm looking right. It's it's right beside the strip lines. It will share a curb cut with strip lines. Yes.
Yes, a quick question. What is the, the, just kind of average along the homes behind the grocery store? So average, the difference in topo or elevation of that structure there and those homes that are down? Because they're down downhill from there.
What is the average elevation?
Most of those homes that now are looking at straight into ground that's rising, are they not?
Yes, sir. I I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you an answer that I'm not a hundred percent confident in, but I think it's about eight to ten feet is my.
So so really, when you look at it, a six-foot fence or an earth and berm or whatever is, it's actually been added to the eight feet.
Yes, sir. That's right.
And so in theory, it's fourteen feet.
Yes.
Of heights.
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure the topo line shows that, but I I look at the topo line with the parallel from the grocery store to the backyard.
It could. It could vary. You're right.
Any other questions from the commission?
I have one other question. So is it true that, so I I appreciate that what B one and B two are are alike, that there's a lot in the column of B two that are not B one. You didn't really speak about that. So is there a way that if if this were approved for B two?
Who are you directing?
Guy, I'm sorry, Guy, I'm sorry. Guy, is it, is, I know that you said that if it's approved, it's approved based on this plan. But I am concerned, as I said before, that Building twelve is B two. And that later, perhaps one of the, perhaps the idea of a of a hotel comes around something, which is B two and not B one. So if that were the case, they would have to go through another process of just confirming.
Right, that's correct. If a hotel, which is not shown on this concept plan, we're requesting to be on this location, staff would deny that.
Thank you.
I'm been on the panel almost all along this, but I don't remember back to nineteen ninety, because I just got here. But we really didn't have a B one, B two that were so clearly differentiating. It was just sort of a business design.
It was, yeah, the general business, but the the B one back then encompassed a lot of our B two now. Yes, sir. That's correct.
We separated it into B two to try to distinguish them. But the other reason I went ahead and spoke up right now, I was also one of the ones that put the bullseye on this spot. Because I was on the development of the thirty-year plan, and the one thing that we did try to accomplish is not with that turn of Cony into, when that, and we said, if we're going to develop, we want to develop at the major intersection. And not all the way down seventy-eight or all the way down fifty-three. So in a way, this was already on the plan when we were trying to conceptualize where we're going to be thirty years from now. And this layout and the idea that they're bringing stores and things that the owners and the rooftops around that intersection, all the way on either side of seventy-eight. I'm going to have to say that they have followed the intention of the comprehensive plan, at least by my experience sitting on that committee. So just wanted to throw that out to my colleagues.
Oh, Guy, you don't want to sit. I just have a couple of quick.
Yes.
And and Chuck just answered one of them. I was going to ask you to go into a little more detail about the comprehensive plan and how it applies to that particular intersection. Is there anything that you can add to what Chuck said?
And then Chuck's correct, you know, and then twenty eighteen, the most recent comprehensive plan that we have, this was designated Civic Center character area all around this all around this intersection. And you'll see it encompasses all four corners. So the the idea was to take and and develop notably, you know, where you have these larger intersections. And and this one was already zoned for the the shopping center, the the uses that were zoned for back in nineteen ninety. We felt like this was, and then the citizens felt like this was the place for this type of development. Civic Center character area is also where you find Butler's Cross. You know, that is the same character area that was proposed out here. Also, to Chuck's comment, although we don't have a graphic for it, the two thousand eight comprehensive plan showed the entirety of seventy-eight from about the edge of the Civic Center all the way back to three sixteen as a community village character area, which is, which is the same as our Civic Center. And so the idea was to drop that down, like Chuck mentioned, from the entirety of a corridor development down to a nodal development, eliminating that in between.
I, this is a little thing, but if you stuck a gun to my head and said, tell me what one foot candle looks like in real life, I would have no idea. Can you provide a little clarity? Can you illuminate a little bit what what one foot candle looks like in the real world?
I know you're going to say that. No, I can't. That it it can be measured with a photometric tool. But we require that the engineers submit that to us. They certify this is what it's going to be. If we have issues or if they're not providing full cutoff shields on the light poles, then we can administer enforcement on that.
Wouldn't that lighting proposed for this be about what it is on that bridge with the vicious development? Within the evening, it almost looks like it's foggy.
Yeah. Right, yeah. And and that is the idea, to focus the light down and not out, unless you have shields on each of those. That's correct.
Yeah, it it's certainly not dark. It's a bolt in a candle or put from your face. That's still pretty bright. But that's as bright as it should be. So you will still get a light moon. But, you know, we have that where highways are anyway with all the things, headlights on cars and things. I can see them even from afar. I can see cars going by at night.
Last, last question for me. Chris talked about the notion of Building twelve as a B two construct, the eighty-five thousand square foot structure or a B two. Practically, what's the difference between those two? If if the petitioner were to be willing to rezone that part of the property or keep it as B one where that building is, what's the practical difference between that and B two?
I I think based on their presentation, it would not affect the the outlots for the drive-throughs, and it would not affect the the large grocery store.
Would it, but would it, how would it affect that Bill- Building twelve over time?
They would have to meet architectural standards of our B one, you know, the requirements, the limit, the size limit of individual single tenants, you know, would be affected. So I I think that'd probably be more of a question to them, because I don't know who they have in mind to go in those locations, but.
Well, no, I, my question is for you simply because there are rules and and I was looking for a a call on the rules.
Follow up to that?
Sure.
Get an example. So I know that auto repair is A two and not B.
Right.
So since it just says retail, if it were B two, then go to auto shop. Because it's not specifically designated, just said.
Right.
It would be one, it could not.
Well, I I think an auto repair shop would not meet that concept plan that's shown there.
I guess I don't have that shows me that, that just says retail.
Right. And and so we would, I mean, our our take would, that's not what that would mean. That, I mean, that, obviously, that's not a layout for an automotive body shop.
That's why I asked the question, because there are a lot, there are a number of items under B two that are allowed. That are not allowed with B one. How do you know what fits and what doesn't fit to build twelve?
Yeah. And well, and then that's what, that would be our stance, our stance, but that that is not what that was intended for.
The size of the Publix at Butler's Cross. Do we know the square footage approximately?
I think it's forty thousand, but I do not know for sure. Large evergreens? Yeah, that that's when you're you're talking about your your cedars, your abreviate. So Leland Cypress, those types of, that you get to fifteen to thirty feet.
Our UDC has pages and pages of. Any other questions from the commission?
I have one more. Someone, is there another light that's proposed for Highway seventy?
Another one?
Intersect, lighted intersection?
They, they're proposing one at at that location there.
So that's not just in, okay, all right.
All right. Any additional questions? In that case, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. How much a motion will you approve? P twenty-two, oh, sixty-one. Twenty-two, oh, oh, six-one with a condition of a a five-foot earthen berm between the subdivision lot and whatever B two. With the plantings on top of the berm. That way we can make sure that we're shielding the residences from the business. I think fifty foot is enough. I just think we need a, we can use, I think the residence looks like a, like a earthen berm planted on top of the earth. That'd give them something, Dave, instead of waiting on two seasons to grow.
Mister Chairman, should I ask, you want to add that to number five, or you want to add condition number nine of a earthen berm that needs to light?
Do you want the fence on top of the berm?
Where it will be at, where it would be approved and and make sense to staff. Where staff could recommend either putting it, either putting the six-foot fence up or not, where it would make sense. I don't want to make the applicant run a six-foot fence all the way down to something where it don't, you know, in the middle of woods.
So so you could replace number five with the berm and the plantings?
And the plantings, yeah. And the fence where staff deems need.
That's fine. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Do you have the, you have the, you've got the language for that?
Yes, pretty bad.
I think we're, I understand what he means.
Okay, is that going to serve, is, will that suit the need or do we need?
It will. Let's, let's see if Grace got it.
So if we asked for a six-foot fence before, should we ask for a six-foot berm now?
Add something to the, to the barn.
Six-foot berm plus.
Plus the evergreens. I mean, when they grow, they're going to be.
That's fine. I agree. The six-foot instead of the.
I think the berm will help the subdivision a lot with the, with the, with the noise and really help with the light.
Right.
And and the fence, you know, I'll leave the fence up staff.
And and you're right. I mean, the evergreens are six feet at the time of planting, right? So but it, you're right, the berm would help elevate the.
The sound, the sound break is just tremendously different than a fence is.
So Matt, are you saying that you would replace condition five, a six-foot tall imitation wood vinyl fence with a six-foot tall planted earthen berm?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
And a fence where staff deems appropriate. If somebody needed to fence, your staff says, well, we sure need a fence. Wish we had a fence. Then they hold out, they wouldn't have to come back and do it all over.
Well, certainly, if they're going to allow this pedestrian access in the, in the community doesn't object to that idea, they're going to have to bring that berm down in that area to make it.
We can administer that.
Yeah, all right. So we have a motion to approve with a modified condition five from Matt. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a second from Gavin. Is there any additional discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your right hand. All right, all those opposed? All right, motion carries. Folks, as much as we love having you here, and you're welcome to stay. You do not have to if you don't want to.
Give the moment, give, give the room a moment to clear.
All right, next item on the agenda is rezoned P twenty-two zero seventy-seven, Taylor and Amanda Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again, this is this is P twenty-two zero zero seven seven, Taylor and Amanda Jenkins, located just south of Watkinsville on Column Ferry Road. This is the aerial in your packets of the subject property, which is a portion of C zero four zero two six. Uh, they're requesting a rezon from A G to, which is look in country estates character area. Uh, reason on a four-acre portion of the property from A G to A R in order to subdivide the property into three parcels and build a single-family residence and bring the property into conformance with U D C one oh six oh six A. This is the concept plan you have in your application packet, showing the larger tract to remain A G, a two-acre track and a two-acre track. These are the architectural images submitted with the application and staff recommends conditional approval with the one standard condition. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this time we'll hear from the petitioner or the petitioner's representative.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm Taylor Jenkins. My wife Amanda, thirteen fifty-one Column Ferry Road. Lived in Watkinsville since nineteen ninety-five. And just, um, wanting to take this, like I said, from A G to A R, just on that, uh, four acres. Um, my niece and her husband and two small kids that'll go to Column Ferry and, um, we're wanting on track number three. Um, that's where my mom and dad are living now. And we're actually gonna move my, uh, my parents from track three to the house we're in now. And, uh, we're hoping to build the house that you just saw there in the second or third picture. We're hoping to build that on, uh, track number two. So trying to keep it all within the family. And just hold on to the rest of it for, uh, we've got three, three kids that we would hope at least, uh, one or two of them maybe would stay in O'Conne County and have a nice place to live and raise family themselves. Guys, have any questions? Feel a little like we're on Shark Tank right now.
Uh, we're neither that smart nor that rich.
That's right. I was seeking five hundred thousand dollars for two percent stake in this.
All right, we thank you.
Do you need anything else?
Yeah, not at this time.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and return to the commission. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? In that case, I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Stephen and.
Mister Chairman, just to be clear, that is with the one condition.
Yes.
As presented.
Yes. All right, we have a second from Nathan. And any additional discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion is unanimous.
So it comes to that money, but.
Next item on the agenda is rezoned P twenty-two dash zero zero eight five, D G D F Holdings.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again, P twenty-two zero zero eight five, D G D F Holdings. This is located off Cliff Dawson Road. This is the aerial of the subject property. It is currently zoned A R and A G, split zoning. And their request, it's in suburban neighborhood character area. And they're requesting the reason from A G and A R to A R in order to subdivide into two single-family residential lots. This is the concept plan that you have in your application packets, uh, the architectural images that were submitted. And staff recommends approval with the two standard conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Guy. Uh, this time we'll hear from the petitioner or the petitioner's representative, please.
Good evening. Um, Frank Pittman, Pittman and Greer Engineering. I live fourteen hundred Saxon Road. Um, I'm here tonight representing property owner, um, Mr. John Haddon, who's also here if y'all have any questions for him. As Guy mentioned, this, this property is currently split zoned, um, A R and A G. Um, it is surrounded currently by a, um, an office building to the, I guess that's the south. To the north is about a one-point-six acre parcel and that backs up to Windy Creek Subdivision, which are all roughly one acre lots. So the request would be to, um, carry this zoning to to A R across the board and get rid of the split zoning. It would allow for two, two-acre plus lots, uh, which would fit in with what's going on around there today. The property owner, um, lives across the road. Um, he is, uh, runs a business over there. Your kids may go over there and pick blueberries, um, in the, in the heat. So they are, they are in the community. Um, they're just wanting to clean this up. As Guy mentioned, it's in the suburban neighborhood character area, which is, which allows for this A R zoning. Fits surrounding properties. Uh, the staff has recommended approval and I'm here tonight to ask for your recommendation for approval as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this request? In that case, I'll close the public hearing and return to the commission. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? In that case, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve rezoned case number P twenty-two dash zero zero eight five with the two recommendations.
Motion from Penny to approve. Second from Chris. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Our next item is rezoned P twenty-two dash zero zero eight nine, the new Magnolia of O'Conne LLC.
Thank you, Miss Chairman, Commissioners, again, P twenty-two zero zero eight nine, New Magnolia of O'Conne LLC. This is, uh, located at Virgil Langford and Mars Hill Road. This is the aerial that's in your application packet with, uh, multiple, um, parcels. It's currently zoned R three and is in the regional center character area. Again, the request is the reason of the property from R three M P D and A G to O I P in order to modify the plan for an expansion of an existing assisted living facility. Uh, the current, uh, assisted living facility is, um, is currently there in operation. The previous plan, uh, showed multiple, um, uh, buildings throughout the subject property that were never completed, never finished, and improvements and amenities that were never done. Um, so the applicant has come back with a revised plan and that's what you see before you with cottages that would support, uh, the assisted living facility. And you have these, uh, concept plans in your application packets and the architectural images and elevations have been provided. And staff recommends conditional approval with our, uh, three standard conditions, uh, number four. In lieu of the required landscape strip, a ten-foot wide structural buffer meeting the standards of U D C section eight oh four, eight oh eight oh four B shall be installed along Mars Hill Road and Virgil Langford Road. Said buffers shall be installed outside of all utility, uh, existing utility easements. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this time we'll hear from the petitioner or the petitioner's representative.
Again, Frank Pittman, fourteen hundred Saxon Road. I'm here tonight representing New Magnolia. Um, the owners are Chad Keller and Jay Sanders, who are here tonight, uh, both local. They actually both live in Roanoke, which is about a stone's throw from this development. As Guy mentioned, this, this development is an existing assisted living facility. It's own one of the old R three M P D zonings, uh, part of it is owned ag. There, there was an approved, this was always supposed to be a similar type development with, with a a main building in the middle, the, the approved plan, the old rezoned plan and the approved, um, plat that was done was a bunch of quadplexes on this thing, um, which are kind of outdated now. Um, and so we went back and and one wanted to try to see what we could do to change the quadplexes to to single cottages instead. Obviously, since we had a binding plan, we had to rezone, um, we're asking for, to take it to O I P and that's really just to clean it up, to get rid of the old M P, M P D zoning. The, uh, character area is regional center. The, um, you know, the, the, the project as a whole with assisted living is, is, is a very low-traffic type development. It's, it's high taxpayers without putting kids in school. We talk about that all the time. No kids in school. They don't require jobs, but they pay a lot of taxes and do a lot of volunteer work. So that's, that's a big benefit to the community. Uh, before I end, I want to tell a, a, a quick story. About a year ago, one of the owners of this now called me on Saturday and said, hey, what do you know about this Magnolia Estates? They've put it up for sale and and y'all may know the Rampies, they've been around here running this facility for a long, long time. And, um, I said, I don't know much about it, but I'll look into it. He said, well, we just had to put my grandmother in a sister living facility. We couldn't find anything, you know, Coney County, we'd take her to Winterville. They, obviously, I mentioned earlier, live in Roanoke, um, just about a half mile down the road. He said, it sure would be nice to have something close by, um, for, for people that, that need places for their parents and grandparents to go. You know, um, Prestier Village has done real well, but it's, it's on a enormous, you know, cost level that that most people can't afford and and they're full with a, with a waiting list. So, um, I started looking into it. He, he got excited, knowing that it almost felt like divine intervention for him. Um, and so that's what's brought us here today. Um, so, you know, as I mentioned, it, it meets the character area, staff's recommended approval. And and I'm here to ask you guys to recommend approval as well. I think it could be a, a great expansion. The Rampies had, had plans to expand this and they just, they're ready to retire and and move on. They don't want to put more money in into it to finish this, but, um, I think it could be a, a, a big, a big plus for O'Conne County. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return to the commission. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments?
I got a question.
Yeah, what's the definition of?
So the structural buffer is defining the U D C as, um, either a wall, uh, earthen berm, like we talked about earlier, a fence in addition to your evergreen landscaping. Um, so, uh, uh, a landscape strip is required, but that is primarily made up of, um, shade trees every forty or so feet. They can be clustered, but uh, we felt like because of the tremendous amount of road frontage visibility and for the citizens will be living in the community, it might be good to have a little bit more of a buffer and I believe, I believe the applicant, uh, has agreed to that.
Right, and I was just reading in that right quick, it said ten-foot wide structural buffer. That's what through.
Right, not, not the entirety of it is ten, is a structural buffer, but within that ten feet, you'll do that type. Yeah, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question. Mister Pittman?
Yes, sir.
So are these, uh, individually owned?
No, they would not be individually owned. Um, they would all, this would all be on one parcel. So they would, they would be rental, just like, like most other, and I think the county has a, has a policy where these couldn't be subdivided into individual ownership units.
And for guide, does that mean, does that allow them then to be part of the, the public sewer water?
That's correct. Yeah, it has to be a single ownership and and leased only.
And it, and it is currently approved to be, um, so.
Any other questions? In that case, I'll entertain a motion. All right, we have a motion to approve with conditions. Stephen, uh, do we have a second? Second. Nathan, any additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All right, motion carries unanimously. Next item is rezoned P twenty-two dash zero zero ninety-one, Alexander and Sadie Gin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again, P twenty-two zero zero nine one, Alexander Sadie Gin. Uh, this is located off Flat Rock Road. You have the aerial in your packet, but this is the subject property. It is currently zoned A G in country estates character area. And they're requesting to rezon from A G to A R in order to subdivide into three two-acre lots. This is the concept plan that you have in your packets showing the one, two, three lots. A little bit larger and these are architectural images submitted. Staff recommends conditional approval with, um, our two standard conditions and the number three, the proposed driveway for lot B shall be constructed to provide as much separation as possible from the existing paved driveway for parcel C zero four five zero three four G. And the driveway location shall be subject to approval by the Public Works Director. And and also, condition number two is slightly different. Now, the proposed new driveway for lot C shall be constructed to provide as much separation as possible from the existing gravel drive on lot A. And driveway location shall be subject to approval by the Public Works Director.
Thank you. At this time, we'll hear from the petitioner or the petitioner's agent.
Good evening. I'm Alex Gin. I live at nineteen seventy-one Flat Rock Road. Um, me and my wife bought this, uh, property about three years ago. At the time, we had no kids. Uh, we will have two by the end of this year. Um, as our family has grown, we have considered multiple options as what we can do. The existing home is around four, fourteen hundred square feet. Um, basically, add onto the house, go buy a property somewhere else. Uh, the best option that we came up with was to try and build a new house towards the back of this property, which is shown, shown as lot C. Uh, that would take place over the next year, two years. Um, lot B was basically, uh, while we were going through the process, we said we should go ahead and ask for a third lot. The purpose for that would be if our family grows larger maybe than expected or we both have aging parents and we said if, uh, one set of our parents ever needs to move to that property, that would give us the ability to do so. So me and my wife both would ask that, um, y'all consider this for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and return to the commission. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve with conditions, which therefore.
All right, we have a motion to approve with conditions from Gavin. Do we have a second? Second from Penny. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. Motion is unanimous. Next item on the agenda is rezoned P twenty-two dash zero one thirty-one. Jeremy and I'll do you the courtesy of not butchering your last name.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is very, this is rezoned P twenty-two zero one three one. Uh, again, uh, this is off the Snow's Mill Road, uh, zero, A zero four zero zero eight J is a parcel, subject parcel. It's currently zoned A G and the, in the, all right, country states character area. And again, the reason, uh, request is to reason on the property from A G to A R three uh, in order to subdivide the property into three three-acre lots. Uh, you have the concept plan in your packet and the architectural renderings that were submitted. And staff recommends conditional approval with the one standard condition. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll hear from the petitioner or the petitioner's representative.
My name is Jeremy Ziyadi. Live at five eight seven New Hope Road in.
My name is Jeremy Ziyadi. Live at five eight seven New Hope Road in Monmouth Mill. My wife and I bought this property, I think back in March or April. Uh, we bought it with the intention to move out here with our primary residents. Uh, we have a two-year-old and a three-week-old and we want to have them go to Oconna County School. So, uh, the purpose for the subdivide is just like most other people are saying, uh, we want to be able to have three houses on it. One for myself, one for my elderly in-laws that are seventy-five and seventy-seven. Uh, and one just to have just in case. I'm not on plan on building on the middle lot currently. Uh, I will stay in the lot that's closest to, uh, Coal Springs or the top side of this, uh, diagram. Uh, and the house on the downside, we will remodel to have my in-law stay in and the middle lot will stay vacant for now, probably forever. Um, so I just wanted to see if we can get this approved.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone in the, in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to this request?
My name is Kenneth Thompson. I live at fifteen eighty-one Snow's Mill Road. My issue is not for it to be rezoned. It's his property. It's his, what he choose. All the land around it are mostly five acre traps. Is what most of them are. And, uh, so if he wants to the dam on the lake is, is what it own just, just a portion of the dam. He owns the rest of these, you know, that's, that's my issue is I know it's leaking a little bit, so. Who's liable for that if he was to sell it or if it was to leak? That's my, that's my only issue.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition to this request? Yes, as a petitioner, you have a, an opportunity to clarify or rebut.
The dam was dis- distinguished in the, uh, when it was first built and it's supposed to be equally maintained by both homeowners. I've never met this gentleman, but the gentleman behind me as well as myself. At this ti- time of point, I'm not going to sell any of these properties or just for personal use, so I will equally divide those. Uh, he's also saying, I mean, currently it's zone A G. You can't build more than one house on five acre traps. I think that's what it's sound. This property is nine point eight nine or nine point eight five acres. So technically by law, I can only have one house on it currently, which it already has. So if we weren't to rezone it, I wouldn't be able to build uh, another house on it because I don't even have ten acres or more. I only have nine point eight five. So the maximum I can actually get is one house, which is already on the property. That's another reason why I'm asking for this rezone because there's no other way for me to build a house on it without doing this. Um, thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right. This time I'll close the public hearing and return to the commission. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Comment on late ownership, um, that we don't have any guidance in the county, right? Does it?
But that's correct. It's, it's a civil issue between the two property owners.
And, and so in some respects, uh, I'm, I'm speaking to the applicant now. If you subdivide and if, uh, it gets approved, you in effect would be taking on three parcel responsibility of the lake. He would have one parcel and the other people would have one parcel. It's the way I've seen it done in, uh, different counties. So the way by permitting the subdivision, you've taken on a little bit more responsibility for that lake. Do you understand?
I hear what you're saying, but the dam is actually only on a portion of the parcel. So if I were able to be able to prove that divided, the lowest parcel that's in, uh, the proposed survive is actually the only person who would actually. Yeah. And then it will still be equally.
And I'm in a situation like that now, but I was once in a situation at Britain Estates, uh, subdivision and the subdivision had a ordinance or a, an agreement with each other as to proportion. And I would recommend you guys put in that sort of agreement while you're still friendly and talking about it. Cause when it really starts leaking, it gets ugly. And, uh, so I can understand your neighbor's concern. Um, but otherwise I think this is moving in the right direction.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. All right. We have a motion to approve with conditions from Steven. Do we have a second? Okay. All right. We have a second from Chuck. Any additional discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your right hand. Motion carries unanimous. Guy, would you care to educate us at this time?
You might want to invite our guest.
I cannot imagine you not wanting to watch a training video, but thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. Again, this is another installment in our, planning officials training, uh, from A P A. And so this is on, um, equity and planning and ethics and decision making. So we'll watch the first video. Um, you have a question and answer, questions with the answers so that you can follow along. And we'll, uh, we'll watch the video together.
It doesn't have to be very detailed, just like you have a conflict amendment, financial, or you, you just don't know the property next door or something like that. Now, American Association provides ethical principles of planning and is very detailed. This was developed in, uh, nineteen, like nineteen eighty, as, um, part of just general ethics for planning because of its, the follow-up from public request of people who were not going to be A I D P, where it needs to certify planners, but this is found and it correlates with, uh, what your responsibility is. So the first part of this ethical principle of planning is to serve the public. And you need to recognize that everybody has a right to the pay. You did that guy. Every week and you must, we heard it here and he still has the rights to come and talk. Uh, but you got, uh, you would be, your meeting organization, you should have a way for it to give the public. You want to give clear, full and accurate information. Uh, that's why one way to keep everything in meetings. Uh, when you meet somebody at the grocery store and you really should give them the process and discourage that they come and meet it. Not try to tell them how we're supposed to vote or make them try thinking so. Because you're talking about the way they want you to do. It's really important to have these meetings where everybody has the opportunity to talk. Sometimes meetings are held, uh, when people are at work and they can be there. So then they will be waiting times for, to, so the grocery shop will be involved. You're still looking at those market fish, which is those that were established in the, the conference of plan. But you want to ensure all the information available to you is available to the public. If somebody's asking you for that information, you give them the process and you can refer them to staff with additional information. You want to protect, get that we can actually learn. Sometimes somebody wants to break down all trees. You want to be sure that, uh, these things were taken into consideration as well and, and to support properties, uh, that, and you spread the body of health. But it's really important that you look and it's given relatedness with the situation. You make a decision on this piece of property or you recommend a decision on this piece of property. You need to look at what's the mountain from consequences across. What's going to happen later if you make this present action? So with our D, I told you this one hour ago, uh, you want to be that, you're an independent judge. Uh, you don't just go along with everybody. All right. Do not have a unanimous recommendation. Uh, you have to dispose any personal interest you have. That's the conflict with this, uh, one shows or not having a conflict. You can define that personal interest though, but you don't participate in the matter, which you have that personal interest. Uh, and you really should leave the room where the people know while that case of that matter is being discussed. Good stuff. Uh, do not accept gifts or paper or operating. Don't promise anybody your votes the way that you want to vote. And you need to not be an advisor on these plans, which you create as a student. Uh, sometimes you've been a neighborhood planner, you need to be careful that you still participate in any decisions that neighborhood and the city of hope. So it's okay to somehow start with that X, but we certainly don't, I would expect that with that. Don't use any confidential information. Don't respond to any confidential. But be really sure that you don't represent the facts of this story in the session. And it's really important that you not participate actively unless you're really prepared, unless you're ready to ask the question. And you need to understand that some other commissioners, you should be accountable to the public and, uh, the, uh, have their right.
I'd like to take a little bit of time and talk about social equity. And share that for many years, A P A has been working towards social equity and inclusion and the implementation of equitable planning. And in fact, in twenty eighteen, A P A adopted this planning property policy guide to further ensure equity as a guiding principle for all who participate in the planning process. So that we're all on the same page and have the same understanding, we'll start with A P A's definition of equity. Equities as defined by A P A's Equity Diversity and Inclusion Strategy, as well as the Planning for Equity Policy Guide, is as follows. Just impairing inclusion into a society in which all can participate, prosper and reach their full potential. By blocking the promise of a nation by unleashing from this pedestal. The policy goes on further to state, A P A has made the closest commitment to equity, diversity and inclusion in all forms. As a means to ensure the writing communities, in which everyone has equal opportunity to learn, save, helping and prosper as well. In other words, planners and those involved in the planning process and decision making must be responsive to changes in the communities and to addressing the challenges we continue to face in achieving equitable and inclusive communities. We want communities where all residents are treated fairly and respectfully and have equal access to resources and opportunities. The policy guide further calls us to see, understand and work to overcome innate biases in our service to our communities and ensuring we aspire to inclusive planning principles. It's integral to our work through the work that you do for your communities. Several A P A foundational documents and essential resources that support equitable and inclusive planning practices, as well as the policy guide, such as A P A's diverse, equity diversity and inclusion strategy, A P A's ethical principles in planning, which we have just discussed, A P A's core values and the A I C P code of ethics, all are available to commissioners of planning and members. These resources provide the information and tools necessary to help you fulfill your responsibilities as decision makers and to make most certain of your interests. I strongly encourage you to take a look at these documents and essential resources and add them to your planning process and your decision-making toolbox to support your work as commissioners and planning and members. Remember, the prime principles of equity is core value and of our ethical responsibility.
All right. That's the two videos and, um, and you have the questions and answers in front of you as well as, um, the ethical principles of planning from A P A that they were discussing. Um, so if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them or any thoughts or discussions.
All what I have is a conflict of interest.
Yes.
Just an application of my package to your office.
Uh, that would be a discussion with us. Yes. If you felt like you, there was a, uh, a chance that there was a conflict of interest, uh, yeah, please reach out to me and we can discuss that.
I have, oh, same question.
Okay.
I wasn't sure how to interpret what was said there. So if you are, let's say that one of us lived in Oconna Cross. The, we talked about the night.
Right.
I don't, but.
Right.
One of us live there, then perhaps maybe you shouldn't be voting yes or no on it, but do you have the opportunity to stand on the other side of the podium and speak your mind? I mean, I don't think, I, I would be concerned if you gave up all rights to say anything to anybody.
Right. No. And, and I think what she was talking about, I think the, the lady was referencing that is if you're a, uh, a member of a community or planner of that community. So if you're on the H O A or if you're a, an advocate for that community, um, you know.
Well, you have the financial.
Well, well, that would be the conflict. I think this is, yeah, that, I think this is more of a.
Your opinion out there and you don't want to give up your voice.
Yeah. So, so you, yeah. So if you, if you wanted to, uh, I guess, uh, you know, share your opinion on an item, that you would recuse yourself from your, your planning commission position and, and you would be part of the audience. That's right.
Cause if you went to subdivision meetings and you had the insight of their input and then you sat there, you would be playing on both sides. But if you chose to either sit there and uh, stay out of those meetings or go to those meetings and sit with them, then you're playing ethically.
I agree.
Is it, is it not? I'm sorry. You just can't go to their meetings and then secretly.
You just can't go to their meetings and then secretly.
Like the example. Maybe I was in the property right behind the subdivision.
And if you felt like they did, then that's where you should be.
Yeah, that's, so, yeah, that's kind of what I'm saying. Maybe you didn't participate in any of, any, maybe you never did. You didn't speak to the attorney, you know, you weren't involved in that, but you still wanted an opinion, right?
Yeah, but, but you would, you would.
Recuse yourself, but you still would have a voice, that's all I'm saying.
That's great.
That does bring up another question, sort of like that, is if we.
I'm patient, he'll run out of gas.
Are you sure?
My bedtime is seven bucks, I'm already. The weight of a tree, uh, but if we felt strongly enough about a thing that came before us, that we wanted to go and then stand up and come with the B O C, are we being an ethical or unfair to our commitment here? So it's a parallel question, yeah.
Yeah, that, that one, I'm, I'm not sure.
That we do not speak to any of these issues as planning commissioners. When, when you, if you have an opinion about something, if, if you're involved, if you wanted to speak in front of the B O C, you would have to do it as an Oconee County private citizen and not a member of the planning commission.
Right, yeah, but I mean, you, you, I mean, you all have rights as well, right? And I think that was her point, is just.
I thought I heard her say something like, you had to leave the room, and then I thought, well, then how do you have a?
Well, okay, now, I think, I think, I think in that case, that's that conflict of interest case. I think if there's a financial, monetary, yeah, I think that's what she was addressing.
I had to do it on one occasion, because one, the company that was working for the time was presenting a project to us, in which case he was too close to the.
You know, if you're, if you have a personal interest, as, you know, as a property owner, I have the rights that any property owner has, irrespective of, of my role here. What I can't do is be both at the same time, and, and there's a difference between that and having a financial interest in somebody else's property, where your vote as a commissioner would benefit you in some way that is not clearly visible, you know, and, and I think those are the areas that we would want to be caught in.
That's correct.
But we would never suggest that you could not have a right to your opinion about your property, just like we give every other citizen in this county.
Yeah, that's right.
I like asking rather than.
And we do too, we, we appreciate that.
So to put that one to the dead, if Chris in this situation was a member of, of Tony Crossing, should he identify his address, or just go ahead and speak as Chris? You know, let, you know, just say that I, I'm familiar with this situation, and I feel that I should add this to this discussion motion.
No, 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 I think if, I think if that were the, the case, I think you should discuss that with staff, and we would, we would verify the proper course of action. Okay. Alright, I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you, as always.
So, uh, well, yeah, but you, you can't, you can't split without a motion to adjourn.
I, I'm just, I was just thanking you for your time.
Oh.
Motion, motion to adjourn by anybody?
Yeah, I'm, I'm like.
Alright, we have a motion to adjourn from Matt. Do we have a second? Alright, second from Nathan. Thank you all.